Okay, bring this joint public hearing or so it's a joint public hearing or is it planning board meeting first?
Planning board meeting.
All right, bring this planning board meeting to order. Uh, if anyone is recording this meeting besides the Zoom link, please let me know now. Thank you. I have the agenda. I have the planning board agenda. I didn't have the.
He's just meant that way.
Okay, uh, roll call of planning board members. That's how their vice chair acting chair today.
Peter MacIver, planning board member.
Tom Blitzer, alternate.
Big Michelle, Big Michelle Clark.
And Sarah Brown, Anton, planning board member.
Thank you. All right, now moving on to approval of the meeting minutes from February thirteenth.
I'm gonna do our call to order.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, we're gonna call this meeting to order. This is the economic development meeting. The meeting is being recorded by that committee, economic development committee. If any other person present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson. Thank you. And we're gonna take a roll call of members and it will be a roll call though, because councillor Gordon is online, so. I'm here, Chairperson Healy, councillor Master Taro.
Here.
Councillor Gordon.
Yes, I'm here, sorry.
Thank you.
I didn't unmute.
And then, uh, President Wondolowski.
Yes, here.
Thank you. Good. Next first to through the meeting minutes, February thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, hitting with. Second, any discussion?
I wasn't president, so I was.
Motion, I may move to prove the minutes. Let's move. Do the vote.
My vote.
I do right there. Let's see, yes. Right? Yes, you. You vote. You can vote, yes, 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 you'll vote today.
Can elevate him to voting.
Okay, so I'll elevate Tom Blitzer to voting member tonight. All right, all in favor of approving the minutes of February thirteenth? Thanks for that.
Bye.
It's three to zero, and two abstentions.
Yeah, I'm abstaining because I was also not there.
Sure. Back to you guys.
Yeah, no meeting minutes.
Okay. All right, and next order business, uh, public hearing, joint public hearing of the Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board on the proposed zoning amendments to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and site plan review and approval ordinance to meet the Affordable Homes Act, and to consider amendments to mixed residential business uses, height requirements, and multifamily in the CC district. So, we have a sign up sheet there? Okay. There's the time limit typically on these. All right, so we'll do three minutes each. We'll start with the list on the sheet here, and then we can go to folks on the screen that works. I'm just gonna open the meeting on our end too. Okay. Okay, so in accordance with Home Chartered Economic Development Committee and Planning Board, we'll hold a joint public hearing on Thursday, March sixth, twenty twenty five at six P M. Meeting ID nine six oh nine eight one three three one four four to consider the proposed zoning amendments to accessory dwelling unit ordinance and site plan review and approval ordinance to meet the Affordable Homes Act and to consider amendments to mixed residential business uses, height requirements, and multifamily in the CC district. The proposed amendments can be viewed online. Uh, the city council may consider the same on Wednesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty five at six thirty P M at the John Zon Community Center, thirty five Pleasure Street, and via Zoom. Materials can be obtained from the City Clerk's Office, Fourteenth Court Square, by phone, four one three seven seven two one five five five, extension six one six three, from eight thirty A M to five P M, Monday through Friday, or the Department of Planning and Development, by phone, four one three seven seven two one five four nine, from eight A M to four P M, Monday through Friday. And we are opening this meeting at six oh seven. Okay. So we'll start our way down the list, and everybody gets three minutes if you're on the list. Starting with the people in the room who signed up on the sheet, and then we'll go to the books on the Zoom. So, Susan, you pick time, or? Uh, yeah, I can do it.
Good evening. My name is Susan Worgatik. I live at forty five Forest Avenue in Greenfield. Um, councillors and members of the planning board, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I sent you an email with a detailed discussion of my concerns regarding the proposed zoning changes discussed tonight and the proposals in the four citizens petitions, which were submitted this past week. Um, I wish to go through just highlights tonight, keep it simple. Uh, on the ADUs, uh, the language in the proposed zoning changes and the citizens petitions regarding the number of additional units allowed within a home or as an additional building moved until backwards, not forward. As of now, an owner in a two-family home who wishes to build an ADU either as an internal apartment or as an outbuilding could build that unit without permit. The zoning changes and the citizens petitions will require that the building of the additional unit would have, we require a special permit. Um, we've lived with the present zoning for more than a decade. The world has not come to an end. The ADU requirements in the Affordable Homes Act is the floor, not the ceiling. Um, we should continue with our present more progressive zoning. Um, in regard to other ADU zoning changes, they're fine, I support that. On councillor Master Tataro's amendment to two hundred dash fourteen B eighteen, all multifamily dwellings developments within the central commercial district shall be mixed residential business uses. I understand that this is an effort to maintain commercial property on Main Street and the parts of the side streets immediately adjacent to Main Street. However, the central commercial district includes more than Main Street. Um, this requirement may require that those who are developing property that is not on Main Street but in this district reconsider development. My suggestion is that this amendment be tabled and reworked to be more precise in its content, for instance, um, to limit the area in question to Main Street from Federal Street or Bank Row to Conway Street, something like that. And that this would, uh, provide the necessary framework that was intended. Um, I support the changes in two hundred forty, uh, dash forty eight subsections A and B, as written in the proposals made by councillor Master Tataro and previously put forward by councillor Garrett. I also support councillor Master Tataro's amendment to the Table of Dimensions requirements because it provides more development flexibility in the central commercial district and the general commercial district without significantly altering the character of those two areas of the city. Uh, just one comment, additional comment in regard to the uh, the citizens petition, uh, discussion of a fund for, uh, supporting AD, residents of ADUs. We already have section eight, we already have the mass MRVP, the Massachusetts Residential Voucher Program. Both of those do those things. We really don't need to put a burden on a, uh, on a city that already is, is having, uh, struggling with, uh, economic developments.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If I could address the audience about, um, the citizen petition zoning amendments?
Sure.
So, the citizen petition zoning amendments four have been submitted, um, last week. A joint public hearing will be scheduled for April eighth on that, so we're not commenting on that this evening. It's only the ADU site plan and these proposed by councillor Master Taro. Uh, so please refrain from commenting on the four citizen petition articles at this time. You can do that at the April eighth joint public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Whisty?
Hi, I'm, uh, Whisty Rohrbacher. I live at twenty eight Prospect Avenue. And just quickly, um, I am in support of the ruling that the state has already done about ADUs, and even if a homeowner has a one or two family home, to be able to put ADU also on the property without getting a special permit. And the other thing that I want to say is I am in favor of changing the height requirement of buildings so that we could put up higher buildings if necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol Letson?
Carol Letson, twenty nine Allen Street, Greenfield. Been here for quite a while, seen a lot of changes in the town. And, um, I am excited about the possibility of having more ADUs in town. Uh, I don't see any need to add additional restrictions and hurdles for, um, planning and constructing ADUs in our neighborhoods. I feel a strong need to support additional housing. We need so much housing for people who are, uh, infirm, who may not be able to get upstairs. Um, and I do think that having ADUs the way it's constructed now, the, the restrictions are fine, but I don't need to add anymore. And, um, I wish that these boards here today would work very hard to, uh, simplify the process for ADUs. Thank you.
Lexi Turner?
Hello, I'm Lexi Turner, seventeen, Chestnut Hill. Um, I want to thank the members of the Economic Development and Planning Committees for all of your diligent efforts on updating the city zoning ordinances. Um, as we all know, Greenfield has an acute housing shortage. There's a growing number of individuals, families unable to secure housing and finding themselves homeless. There are young adults and families left out of the rental and homeownership markets. And there are seniors who'd like to be able to downsize and remain in the city near family and friends with a few um, appropriate and available options. I think the zoning amendments that are before the committee tonight, specifically the amendment to simplify the creation of ADUs, to allow for first-floor dwellings that are ADA compliant in mixed-use lots, and to increase the dimensional requirements allowable for buildings in the central and general commercial districts are common sense and necessary to remove barriers to creating more housing that is affordable and accessible for very low, low and moderate income households in the city. Thanks.
Al Norman?
Good evening, members. For the record, I'm Al Norman from Grinnell Street. I want to read to you, uh, some language from the actual statute. Regarding ADUs, it says that no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or restrict or require a special permit or other zoning approval for the use of land or structures for a single accessory dwelling unit in a single-family residential district, zoning district. And it also says, quote, "For more than one accessory dwelling unit or rental thereof in a single-family residential district, there shall be a special permit." So, your, the ordinances you have before you this evening are flawed because there's no, there's no, um, that at one point in the, uh, regulations, it says that, um, I think it's under this section about, uh, how, how this is going to be enforced. It says that it should be the duty of the inspector of buildings to administer and force the provision of this ordinance. No. No, you, you're gonna have to, anybody who wants to put in a second unit is gonna need a special permit. And let me remind you that in your, in your existing ordinance, you have under the site plan review, it says that anything that requires a special permit, anything, requires a site plan review. So that, 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 these are inconsistent with existing ordinance. You, you are not restricted from offering a site plan for, requiring a site plan review of a, of a ADU. You're not restricted from doing that. You have to follow certain rules for that, but you are, you should not be eliminating special, talking about, you know, special permits and, and being under the building inspector. That's ridiculous. That's the responsibility of the planning board or the special permit granting authority. Um, I also want to say that, uh, it's news to me that we can't talk about the four ordinances, so we'll do that in April, but I would have appreciated some notice that you were not gonna allow, you were gonna allow somebody else to talk about it and not me. So let me just say that, um, let me, let me repeat this sentence from section two hundred fifty-six D two of your current, of the proposed ordinance. Only one accessory dwelling unit may be created within a single-family house or house lot. That's in there now. And I think that's right. Um, that, that's what's there now. If you, if you, I'm gonna tell you on April eighth, if you, if you choose, you have the right to choose to limit it to one unit per lot. And, uh, that's in, that's in the regulations from the state. So if you're not gonna follow, the, the law gives you the option not to, not to have to have multiple units, well, I, which I will speak voluminously for my three minutes on the eighth, but I won't do it tonight. But I think, I think these are some of the flaws that are in this ordinance is that, um, you know, we, we should not be, uh, eliminating, you should have a special permit and a site plan for ordinance for unit number two. You cannot, you do not have, you do not have the right to take those out. You have to provide, those are required to have a special permit under the law and the bylaw and the regulation. So I, I don't, I think that needs to change.
Three minutes left. Thank you.
I had, I had, I had written comments that I gave you on site plan, which, which unfortunately I won't have time to share with you. Maybe I'll get it in on, uh, the eighth, but.
We did receive that email.
Pardon me?
We did receive that.
I know you received it, but you never, I never get any questions and never have any comments about any of this stuff.
Okay.
This is, this is a dead process, John.
John Garrett?
How's it going? John Garrett, ninety-three Hope Street. So I, um, just wanted to thank the various boards that are here for the time to speak, and I am grateful for the work that's been done on trying to make our city more affordable and the work that will continue to be done. So thank you to councillor Master Tataro and the planning board in particular for introducing these amendments. I'm just gonna go through them in order. Um, I, long story short, I, I really want to see five out of the six pass. Um, I'm gonna go through just in the order I'm looking at on the agenda. The one that, um, Susan spoke to and, you know, as far as the intention with the central commercial district amendment one, amending section two hundred dash fourteen. I applaud the intention behind it as far as preserving commercial real estate. But what this would do right now is any building that, you know, multifamilies define in our code is four units or more. So if you want to build a six-unit triple-decker, you know, style building, you know, to help increase affordable housing in the central commercial, then this would prohibit that from happening unless there was commercial real estate, which makes it less likely that that project would happen in the first place. And so the goal of all of what we're doing here as far as zoning is making it easier to build housing, removing barriers to entry. And so, again, I appreciate councillor Master Taro's intention. But I think this one should either be reworked, an overlay district created from Main Street as, uh, Mr. Worgatik kind of cited, or something along those lines. Um, as far as the second zoning amendment increasing the height, that is especially important in the central commercial, and I dearly want to see that passed because of what the central commercial also offers, which is there are no setbacks in the central commercial required, there are no parking requirements required for residential zoning. So as far as areas in the city where we can really make a difference in our housing crisis, which is real, and everybody knows that if they've looked at the cost of rent or the price of housing anytime recently, is to focus on this area of town where it's the most appropriate to build up. So I especially applaud councillor Master Taro for putting this amendment forward. So I hope you give it a positive recommendation. Uh, the third amendment I originally introduced in our conversations at the Economic Development Committee. Some of the other councillors expressed some concern, again, about commercial real estate. I heard the concern and I, you know, frankly agreed that that's something that is worth considering. And so we compromised and councillor Master Taro was able to come up with something with, uh, Mr. Tuarang that I think absolutely deserves to be passed and will make a difference for folks who, especially with accessibility needs, which is also now in the amendment, which wasn't before. So the fact that this has to be ADA compliant, you know, it puts our money where our mouth is as far as accessibility. Um, the accessory dwelling unit question has really been a lot of ink. There really are not likely to be that many accessory dwelling units built. But if they're gonna be built, let's have as many as possible. We have a housing crisis. It's a simple matter of supply and demand. The more housing units we have, the more that the cost of them for the people that need them to live is gonna go down. So anything we can do, removing site plan review, allowing, you know, housing, oh, am I done?
Yeah.
And thank you, and it's good to be alive, and I'm glad this is a living.
I'm glad it's a living process. And last person on the list here, Nikki Garrett. And folks could start raising their hands on the Zoom, so we can switch over there next.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nikki Garrett. I'm at ninety-three Hope Street in Greenfield. Um, I, you know, I'm echoing some of the other comments that have been shared tonight. They're in support, uh, of a majority of the amendments that are on the table. I'm just gonna speak more generally to the importance of, um, this, the, these committees' respective work uh, in creating more housing opportunities in Greenfield. Um, I, I work at Franklin County Regional Housing Authority, and I can just speak from that perspective. Um, that we, you know, we all know we're in a housing crisis, but to see the number of folks who are walking into our building saying, I have nowhere to go and we have nowhere to put them. Um, the, the wait lists are insane. Uh, you know, we talk about affordable housing and believe it or not, Greenfield is much more affordable than other communities, even in, even in, you know, the western part of the state. And, you know, to, we, we want to invite people to come live in Greenfield. And, and for many folks, Greenfield is more affordable than, say, you know, Amherst or East Hampton or something like that. And so folks are looking to, to move here, looking at the rent, saying, hey, maybe I could actually do something like that, but there are no spots available. Let alone if you have accessibility needs, if you have, you know, cer- certain housing requirements, just, um, as you know, the vacancy rate is so incredibly low, I think half of a percent or something like that. Um, and so I just, I want to encourage this committee to consider how, uh, housing can work in, in cooperation with business development, um, as compared to in, in conflict or in tension with, um, because I, I love this idea of more housing in the central commercial district. Uh, and I also certainly don't want to compromise Main Street storefronts. We all want to see a vibrant downtown, but I think we can have both. And so creating opportunities that, that allow for more development, um, in both arenas is, I, I want to believe there's a happy medium there. Um, and so I just really, uh, want to support the, the idea of, uh, first-floor dwellings for accessibility needs, um, to allow folks who who most desperately need access to downtown services, to, you know, medical appointments, closeness to the hospital and so on. Um, more opportunities like that would go a long way for, for meeting that gap in the housing stock, I would say. Um, I mean, that really particular populations needs. Um, so I could go on, but I won't, and, uh, thank you so much for all you do, and I look forward to seeing the outcome.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Has it spoken already? All right, I'll just go from left to right, as I see him on the screen here. Uh, so Garth, next?
Um, hi, yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, there's been many, many good, good comments so far. Um, my, my comment is, is mostly just around like the, the ADUs, et cetera, uh, kind of issue.
Sorry, Garth, if you can say your full name and address, please.
Sorry, uh, Garth Chaney thought, uh, twenty-six Grinnell Street.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, my, uh, comments, uh, primarily around the, um, ADUs, et cetera. Um, I, you know, I, I support, you know, more, more housing downtown and all, all that. Um, the, the ADUs, there's, like, as, as has been noted, there's been a hell of a lot of ink spilled around this. Um, it's basically just in another portion of a multifamily dwelling, right? All the other zoning and, and site things all, all exist. Um, so it's, it's really not an issue, and I, I'm frustrated that, um, so many of my neighbors are so in a kerfuffle about it. Um, but, like, in all of our single-family zoning areas, that means you can have one to three things by right, so just let it go. Like, let's just build some housing. If it's inside the house, if it's outside the house, as long as it's within forty percent of the, you know, it's not paving over the entire thing, just let it go. Um, let's build some houses, let's get more people into town. Let's try to actually grow our town rather than being a shrinking, dying, dying death spiral. Um, so thank you for your work and, uh, stay strong. Cheers.
Thank you. Uh, Stephanie?
Hi, good evening. Stephanie DuKlosh, uh, Chapman Street. Um, I have, uh, wanted to make a couple of comments about the height restriction. I think that eighty feet is, um, arbitrary and a little bit too high. Um, if we are looking to raise, uh, up the buildings in the central commercial district, we might want to remember that we do like the aesthetics of, of a lot of what we already have in, especially in our historical areas. Um, so my concern, I mean, Concord went sixty feet, I believe. I don't think we need to go further than that. Um, as far as the ADUs are concerned, my, uh, a really big concern of mine, and I had, there is an ADU in my neighborhood already. Um, it actually exceeds the, the the building that it's, uh, you know, it's, their father lives in. Um, I didn't have a problem with it. I love my neighbor. I've known them for fifty years. Um, they came and talked to me about it, so, um, I didn't bother to go to the permitting hearing for that one, because I already had a conversation with them. Um, my concern is, uh, taxes. So, because it really hasn't been addressed about how we tax these and, you know, are we gonna potentially create a bigger homeless problem if we're taxing, you know, two parcel, uh, two particular buildings on one parcel, and then it, the tax burden becomes too heavy for one or the other, and one can't supplement the other. And now we've made them have to go and potentially, uh, lose their homes because of tax liabilities. So, uh, that's the only concern that I really have with ADUs and really notifying people, and I think that site plan reviews are great if you're trying to put more than one on your. You don't know the dynamics of, of some of the neighborhoods, and it may not be, uh, it might not be a good fit. Um, and as far as the elderly being in the attached dwellings, I absolutely love that idea. I, I wish more families would, would take into consideration moving some of their children or some of their family members into their homes so that it's not such a struggle, and it does open up some other housing for people. I'm not against housing at all. Um, I actually worked in housing for six years, um, and really worked hard to try to keep those people uh, into their, you know, apartments, um, getting them access to programs like Raft and, and such. So I'm, I'm really for making sure people can stay where they're at. Uh, I'm not against an ADU, but I really think it's important that you get an input, um, from your butter, or maybe there may be something you might not know because maps aren't accurate all the time. Thanks.
Thank you. And, uh, Jessa?
Everyone, my name is Jessa McCormick, and I live at twenty Frederick Road. Uh, first, thanks to everyone here for working to make housing more affordable, and I want to just voice my general support for the proposed ADU regulations. Although I do agree with the rethinking that commercial use requirement that other folks have mentioned. Um, my husband and I moved to Greenfield last May, and there are lots and lots and lots of reasons why we wanted to live here, but two are relevant. First, we love the diversity of housing available. On my street alone, there are low-income housing developments, apartments, single-family homes and duplexes. It's a really beautiful thing to have that kind of housing all in one place. And it's something that I hope we keep on building, especially as the housing crisis intensifies. And that includes ADUs. That's part of that beautiful diversity of housing. Second, we really love Greenfield's walkable downtown, and that's why we support the increase in the height limit. Another floor makes it easier for developers to make their projects work financially. And another floor means more people to support our local businesses, which means more small businesses will come here. And that means more small businesses for me to go to when I walk downtown. So all of this is good for community. I really appreciate you all, um, working on this, and I hope you agree with the points I shared. Thanks.
Thank you. And, uh, Louise? Louise, if you can hear us, you can unmute and speak.
Got it.
There we go.
Sorry.
No problem.
Wrong place. Um, um, my name is Louise Amio. I live at fifty-six Madison Circle. And I particularly support the, uh, ground, uh, ground floor dwellings, um, in, on, in the downtown. I think that that's extremely important for um, mobility. I think that that's extremely important for mobility impaired people and senior citizens as we get up there. Uh, as someone suggested, we, senior citizens really would move out of our homes if we could find a place, a suitable place to live, and we would like to do that. And I also appreciate the extending the height of the buildings in the downtown and general commercial areas because I think that that is a quick way of expanding housing without expanding the footprint, prints very much. And I generally want to thank you both, both committees for the work that you're doing. I think it's extremely important. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see no more hands. Anyone else in here like to speak?
Nancy Hazard, thirty string terrace.
Nancy goes, if anyone else on the Zoom wants to speak, go ahead and raise your hand so we can switch to you after Nancy.
Thank you. Okay, Nancy Hazard, thirty string terrace in Greenfield. I'm in support of the proposed zoning amendments and a majority of the ADU regulations. And I'm going to talk a little bit about why that is. I'm concerned about the lack of available housing in Greenfield. With the present situation, the cost of rental housing is skyrocketing and we cannot welcome more people to our community. Particularly concerned about the lack of first floor accessible apartments with our large population over sixty-five and the need for accessible apartments is increasing. I'm also interested in seeing Greenfield become more resilient. For example, if more of us could walk, bicycle and take buses downtown, we would be using less cars. Therefore, I'm interested in seeing the housing density increase in the central commercial and the general commercial zones. And that would enable people to have that capability of living downtown with a car, without a car, and to preserve open space that we have, to reduce the pressure on open space that we have. So the zoning amendments, I just want to comment on two of them in particular that I'm in favor of. Amendment number two, which raises the height restrictions, which someone else just spoke to for the same reasons. And amendment number three, of which again, first floor apartments, which Louise just spoke to as well. As far as the ADU standards go, I have two comments. Standard number D two, it, there was a strikeout in this, like striking out the two, or two-family homes. So I would like to see it without the strike through added. So in other words, it would read that only one ADU may be created within a fa, a single family or a two-family house or house lot. There's no reason to delete the words two-family homes. Greenfield has allowed creation of an additional apartment in two-family homes for many years. And the state does not prohibit adding an ADU to a two-family house. Then on D ten, I was happy to see that the regulation that the ADUs cannot be used for short-term rental. I strongly support this clarification that Greenfield prohibits the building of ADUs that would be used for short-term rentals. And our goal is to increase housing for people who live here, not to create housing for tourists. And adding that restriction is allowed by the state. So, thank you for.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room or on the screen? Eric?
Hi, Ginny De Sorger, forty-three Silvercrest Lane. Thank you to the members, uh, city councilors and also planning board. I appreciate your service to the community. I support the recommendations and I wanted to say thank you to Councilor Master Tataro for putting some of those forward. I love the idea of increasing the height. We can't make more land, so going up seems like the way to go. And the only other one I wish to speak to is the mixed. I support the intent of that, but I think having a commercial just on the, would be better on Main Street. That, that I would rework a little bit. I, I would not support having mixed use that you needed to have commercial on the bottom floor in all of the central commercial districts because just, for example, the fire that we had this past Sunday. If somebody wanted to build a three-family back there, you know, three stories, they'd need to have commercial on the bottom floor. So I think it limits some of it, but I definitely love the intention of that and I think it would be better limited to just the Main Street. So thank you all for your work.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, we'll close the public hearings. We're also going to close the public hearing at six thirty-eight. All right, so do you now shut your meeting down or? We, um, we can do discussion if we want. Okay. About, about these things. And I think it would be beneficial to have a little prostop between the planning board and the EDC about these. So.
We'll get, we'll get started. Ask Eric a clarification or something? I heard in the, in one of the discussions that right now by right in single-family zoning areas, someone can build up to three apartments in their house, well, have total of three dwelling units. The original one and two, eight, two additional ones by right in a single-family zoning area.
Correct. Due to the amendments that took place by former Councilor Wheeler in Doran several years ago, all residential districts in Greenfield allow one, two and three family units by right.
And we're considering an ADU unit, so, okay.
ADU is a dwelling unit.
Okay, okay. So that changes my mind on something that we can talk about a little bit more.
I, I think the conversation really, I think a lot of these are, are home runs. The height increases, in my opinion, going from fifty to eighty and forty to sixty. I know we had some, you know, emails come through about doing an engineered survey to make sure that was even possible. I don't think the city should spend any money on determining what a developer can and cannot do with a piece of property. It, it should be done by the developer and they should bear the cost of that right to say, "Hey, let's raise this building. What do we have to do structurally to do it?" Let them do it. We're not opposed to them doing it if it's possible. But, um, so that, I just want to address that because it came out publicly from a lot of constituents. So in my opinion, I, I'm in favor of this, this amendment. Going back to the multifamily dwellings in accordance with two hundred dash forty, all multifamily developments within the central commercial district should be miss, mixed residential uses. You know, some things have been thrown out there about the other regions, which I do agree with. I do think we need to protect Main Street, Bank Row, Federal Street to a certain point. And those are the areas that I would really focus on. I, I don't just say, like, a lot of people are saying, "Let's just maintain Main Street," but Bank Row and Federal to, let's say, um.
Not quite McDonald, but close, maybe the Bank of America?
Yeah, Bank of America. That, that area is highly commercial and I'd, I'd hate to see a lot of those storefronts, like People's Pint and Stuff, lose their space to residential use. It's another important part of the commercial district in Greenfield, so I think there is some work to be done there. And the last one I saw there was the fifty percent split. I'm in agree, I, I think it should be sixty, forty, but in, for the purpose of, you know, seeing this go through, I, I think that's a fair split, fifty, fifty. So, and I, and I do agree that having it as accessible, ADA compliant is big because it helps our elderly community move out of their three-bedroom homes to a smaller, more efficient use for them and it opens up houses for families that want to move to Greenfield. So that's all I have to say about it. I don't know if any other, other councilors want to speak.
I just want to say what really gave me the incentive to pursue this is, but what is, I guess in the plans for one seventy, one eighty-six Main Street, we're going to install storefronts, a small gain of housing. And, um, and they'll be displaced because both, all four of those storefronts are occupied. Now, I don't know what the future holds for them, but, um, we can't put aside commerce for housing. As important as housing is, uh, uh, commercial opportunities are as important, especially, um, what's it, uh, rural development, which is subsidiary of Franklin County Housing that's doing the project. It's kind of a misnomer as far as I'm concerned. It's, it's urban development is what's happening here. And if you're going to have urban development, you have to have commercial businesses to support folks that are living in an urban environment because they're there for a reason. They don't want to get in their car and go anywhere. They want to be able to go downstairs, go to a couple of buildings over and buy a loaf of bread or buy a belt or whatever it is they need. And as far as accessible dwelling goes, we build up pretty much everything is ADA compliant because you need an elevator in the building. And they're safer because there's, there are, uh, there are fire.
New fire codes.
Fire codes. So I, I just don't want to see zoning changes for specific projects. And specifically, I know there's a developer interested perhaps in doing something with the former Snow's property. And yes, the way this amendment is written, if somebody was to, to develop that, it would, it would require commercial space downstairs. Well, there's commercial space there now, unoccupied. But yes, there's something to look at with, with this to perhaps, uh, tweak it, but I just don't want to have commercial businesses disappear downtown. And this is a huge hit as far as I'm concerned, using store, four-star storefronts for eight apartments. And if we could turn back the clock, I would fight. Anyway, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I'll try to come on camera here. This is my baby niece. She's a week old. This is her first public meeting. Thank you all for, uh, for being here, for having this, this discussion. I appreciate everyone who came in and made comments. Um, I guess, I just want to say I agree with, uh, Councilor Garrett's comments and also Councilor Healy. Um, and you know, where I'm coming from is we just need more housing in pretty much whatever way, shape or form we can get it. You know, and, and even small gains here and there get us a little tiny bit closer to, to where we need to be because we all know we have such a dire situation in Greenfield and, and everywhere else, right? Greenfield's not unique in this. So, you know, is whatever we can do, you know, with, obviously within reason, with our regular planning, regulations in place, you know, with our regular processes, that's something that I'm going to support. My concern about some of these amendments is that the more specific we get about regulations and restrictions, the more we limit ourselves. So the, for instance, the fifty percent commercial, fifty percent residential split, you know, I, I get the intention behind it. I'm not actually sure at the moment how I would propose changing that, but I do worry that, you know, if someone comes in just a, a little bit below fifty percent, that that would nix a project that otherwise, you know, could be really useful. So I think that we should consider that a little bit more. And to, to Councilor Master Tataro's point, I will, about built ADA accessibility on the first floor, I will mention that a number of folks that I know who are in wheelchairs or have other, you know, mobility issues really don't want to be above a first floor. You know, an elevator is great if everything's working fine, um, you know, and obviously this is no knock on our, our firefighters or public safety folks, but they want to know that they could get themselves out of a building, you know, in an emergency if they had to. They don't want to be several floors that. So I think that's something to consider as well. But, you know, in general, I, I really appreciate these amendments and proposals and, and I hope that, that we can push them through in a way that allows us to build as much new housing as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. I, I did want to ask the planning board, you know, going back to that amendment one, is it, is it possible and legal to identify a region along, you know, from an address and address around Main Street? Can we do that in the zoning ordinance or does that create an issue with?
No, you can do that. You can be very specific on streets that, that would apply to.
Okay, perfect.
Good. So within a zoning district.
Within a zoning district.
We put a map on the table tonight and do that? Good. A lot. Get it done. What are we gonna do?
I'm not hungry or anything.
It's like anything's done.
It would be nice to leave here with, with some language that we can keep moving forward with rather than kicking this down the curve for another three months. So, you know, we could pull up a map, we could do that. We could also make suggestions and send an email and get it on the next public meeting and let everybody go home and kind of digest this. I think would be the best thing rather than doing it quickly here tonight because when you do that so quickly, sometimes we miss something.
Well, at least get something on the table.
Yeah, so.
Nothing.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I, I think, but I think we could also sit, sit back and mark it up and send it and have, and, and then, you know, in our EDC meeting on Tuesday, potentially talk about that, right? Like as an amendment.
Because we'd have to take this back off anyway. That's a, that's a substantive.
I was going to comment on that, Mr. German and, Mr. German. That right now the zoning ordinance allows, doesn't require all developments in the mix in central commercial to be mixed residential business, okay? And this amendment would make it so that the entire district has to be. And so the proposed amendment to limit it to a certain area, the streets only along Main Street is making that less restrictive. So upon the further thought, I think that this would not be a substantive change because it's actually reducing the impact from the original amendment that is being proposed. So it's less of an impact and therefore I think it could go forward without the start, restart of the public hearing.
What you're saying is to, to we're discussing now as far.
Exactly.
To find, there is a finding streets.
I, I think it's a good idea. I, I really appreciate, uh, Councilor Master Totoro and all the work that you did on this and where we've come on this. I think multi-use is what people want in your commercial area. And, and so figuring out a way to be more restrictive where we want the commercial and less restrictive and a, a street over, two streets over, I think makes a lot of sense. So thank you for everybody reworking this.
And well, it's where everyone has to get a plan of somebody by a certain time, a certain day.
So do you not want to take a look at?
We could do it certainly. Um, I, I think maybe we, we get the information we need here. We look at it, but we continue this discussion because I still want to talk about ADUs as well. So we could always circle back around to this. I did, I.
I'm thinking like Conway Street to Federal Street on Main Street is, just to throw some.
We'll just look at the map.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd have to be High Street because you have the Garden Cinemas, you have all that stuff down there, right? So I think it would be high all the way down to where the Applebee's is. Yeah, because you have that lot there right now.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of all the things along.
I would stop at Colrain Street personally.
Yeah, I was thinking Colrain Street to High Street, which would be the Main Street tip, complete streets project at the same extent.
That's the walkable portion of Main Street.
Main Street, High Street.
I, I would say with respect to that amendment, I would agree, Colrain Street to High, Bank Row in its entirety and Federal Street from Main to Beacon. And the reason I say Beacon is that's the last traffic-controlled intersection prior to Silver Street.
But other.
Where the Walgreens is. Well, Walgreens would be on the opposite corner, but that intersection.
What, what is it like? What's the next? How far could you go even further? What would the logic be? Two there. Well, you go down Silver, down to Silver.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the ends of those side streets there are polar residents, so. Makes sense. I mean, the, the west side of Federal Street is also heavily residential.
Right.
As opposed to the east side, which is where CVS and. Is where CVS and most of your larger. Buildings are.
If we're adding more residents, that's the whole thing about it. Like just the ground floor is gonna have a shop, but everything is buzzing with residents, so we're not really hurting.
I think the the argument though is that if the retail market is too weak, nothing will get built. Or we'll be limited to three, three inner buildings, which would not trigger the 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 mixed use requirement. I think that Maple Street would be far enough for a requirement. I mean, if someone, they can still, it's allowed. I mean, I guess we can talk about that. Mixed use building should be allowed up the entirety of Federal Street, but we're talking about where it should be required.
Has to be.
So it needs to be in an area that's got some commercial viability such that the developer would actually be able to make that work or you're just hampering the potential.
The closer closer to downtown, the better.
Yeah, so you're thinking Maple or even Pleasant, yeah.
I guess if it's required.
You want to see it?
And not.
See the buildings?
Pleasant would make sense. Because that's. Sort of after that, it breaks out into.
Into a lot of stuff.
Very mixed use. And there's plenty of commercial in there, but. I think you're right about sustaining. Viability of those projects.
Historic district, man. We can still see the streets.
Ben Harris found the north side, the side streets going north off of Main Street. Where there's presently is commercial, even if there, you know, four or five buildings in. I mean, how do you want to approach that? Where do you stop?
Yeah, I think you stop at Main Street.
I think it's so tough for businesses to locate.
Yes.
Right. And you really want to encourage them to be on Main Street.
Right.
It feels like tighter tighter would be better.
I think I think you're better off having more housing on, let's say, Catman Street. That's gonna, because without housing, you don't have a thriving business community. You need people to buy things. So I think opening that up to allow people to build housing.
It will strengthen the business.
Will strengthen the business district, which is where I define right here, right?
We've got empty storefronts, so if you can funnel people.
Yeah.
There where there's more foot traffic.
Committee, so she might be able to step in.
That's Eric's on the plane. Erica is on the. Planning board, so she, yeah, you got Erica.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I I just want to to jump in on this conversation with this commercial. There's one way I think we could look at this is, you know, we have a downtown that's defined. Partially by the topography coming up on Federal Street and entering to our center, the heart of the town where Town Hall is. But then also on Main Street coming in, we also have some topography coming from the west. But we have a natural kind of gateway to downtown, to our town center. Defined by the shape of 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 the land. And I think that's a way to, there there could be a way to reinforce that and have these kind of gateways to downtown. From those, at least on the west part of Main Street, from that point where it levels off. We have, we'll have the fire station there. In other words, I think Conway Street is a good point to end that. But we we should look at this from design, a design perspective and how we're reading our downtown and really reinforcing this commercial center. Because if I look to the future, as we have more people and our commercial area becomes more vibrant. You know, we would really want to support that. Reinforcing that downtown. Am I coming through? I don't, I'm getting. The other thing I wanted to say, which follows up on some other comments, Mayor Disorder was also expressing this about. Commercial on the ground floor. I think we have to look at public face and private face. And I I can totally understand why somebody who's disabled or somebody who wants to live on the ground floor. But I would look to putting that to a less public side and more towards the back. The back of a lawn.
That's actually. The ordinance.
Yeah, I I would really encourage that because. If we're, if we look at our downtown again, it's not, we don't have a lot of downtown street front. It's short. You know, from from one, from, excuse me, from Conway to to Federal Street. It's it's a very short amount of space, you know, walking distance of ten minutes. And so I I would hate to give up any of that and same moving north on Federal. But Federal Street is very long and I could see reinforcing different clusters. On a different parts of Federal Street where we look to kind of create some sub little commercial centers. And and commercial areas that support then the residential areas around that. Going, if you look at this whole ten minute walk radius, that's, I think, a way to look at Federal Street. And where we have existing commercial, can that be reinforced with some mixed use? And a little bit more density of housing, but still keeping commercial. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
One thing I wanted to point out on looking at the zoning map, if if this amendment is only pertaining to the central commercial district. That district only goes to Pleasant and Church Street, and it only goes to Franklin Street east of Federal, but it does go down to. Colrain Street to the west. I think we're still talking about limiting. So I think, Erica, what you're saying, I mean, thinking more. Conceptually about, you know, the full extent of what downtown should be, how far it stretches, one conversation. But I guess reeling it back to this amendment, we would need to limit it to the complaints of the the CC District.
Correct.
Right, which I think is is fine.
Okay.
And we should look at coming up with some design guidelines as suggestions.
Sure.
To look at this more closely in the future.
Do you mind if we go to Counselor Gordon? Counselor Gordon?
Thanks. Yeah, as I, as I listen to this conversation, I think what comes to mind for me about, you know, requiring versus allowing commercial space. Is that on the flip side of wanting to drive, you know, businesses into the empty spaces we already have downtown. We really don't want to, you know, put put ourselves in a corner where we have required commercial space. And then that commercial space sits empty, right? Because that has has the the exact opposite of the effect that you want if you want to build a thriving downtown. And a place, you know, sort of a bustling business district. As we know now, the more spaces you have empty. You know, the less people feel like that's a a business district they want to go to. So again, I think the more we can give ourselves flexibility and not require certain things, the better off we'll be.
I disagree with that so much. When we're finished with this, I'd like to bring it back to the ADA discussion as well. There's a couple of things. So it feels like we're getting pretty close. And so I I like the direction we're going with this. And, you know, there's been talk that there's not that much Main Street. But there's actually, we have a lot of commercial districts. So really focusing on the downtown. And trying to build that up feels like the right.
Well, I think so. That is already pretty pretty much defined is what we're looking at. We say that specific district, but when we're finished with this.
Okay, so are are we at the point where maybe we want to make an amendment? I think what we had here was from my notes, correct me if I'm wrong.
Why don't we take a closer look at the math before we. Come to a final decision on this?
Yeah, I mean, if you guys do want to do it, have further discussing at your EDC meeting, that might be a good idea.
Yeah, and we, yeah, we could then make an amendment in the EDC meeting.
That's a question about, I mean, I think it's related, but amendment number three. It says first floor commercial spaces shall occupy no more than. No less than fifty percent of the first floor square footage. So just a question on interpreting that. So the the building that you talked about on Main Street, the proposal for the by RDI project. I I believe that they explored the, they couldn't do a mixed use because it required the whole first floor. To be commercial, had they done a mixed use. So they had to do all residential for that reason because they couldn't financially support. So this is kind of a compromise. You're not requiring the whole first floor, you're just requiring half of the first floor. But I guess my question is, that's a multi-building project and only one of the buildings is on Main Street. The other building, the townhomes are off of Main Street. So do we think this applies to the, if if any building is fronting on one of the streets we identify? Main Street, Federal Street. If the project has frontage on that street, do all buildings within the project, if it's a multi-building project, need to add up to fifty percent of the first floor being commercial? Or is it just the structures that are on that frontage?
It's the frontage.
Structures that are on the streets that were.
What's the address of the building? Is it, yeah, it's Main Street, right? So it's considered a Main Street building. So yes, I would say it would have to fall that fifty percent.
Okay, but if it were a second building within the same development project that has an address on Chapman Street, that's.
So what about this scenario? What if? The project, there's a building on Main Street, there's access to a building in the back, still the same address, maybe A, B, or C, but it's in the back. I'm thinking that only the building on Main Street needs to meet the fifty percent requirement. Any building in the back could be all housing. How you view this?
Right, yes, within that specific structure.
Yeah, like, right, that's how we decide.
It's all about interpretation. So if we're right and everybody is clear on the intent and interpretation, then the language is good.
Basically, you want a first floor apartment and it makes you spilling, that replies, you know, that's going to be. Space on the first floor. No less than fifty percent of the square footage to the first. And has to be in front.
Right, on the. Yeah, right, okay.
Are there other towns that have this type of, oh, this is a.
Yes.
Typical thing.
Yeah, it's it was even more typical and it led, I mean, it was too typical. I I think what we're doing really in this end a little bit is helpful. We've worked in places where. The entire downtown, you know, the whole commercial district requires retail. Usually it's referred to as the frontage. It's not a percent of the building area. But what happens is there's no market for that and they're required to do it anyway. They build this useless twenty foot, fifteen foot beach space that has no viability for anybody.
But that was point of.
Right.
That.
Yeah, so I think if we're limiting. Exactly. And then we're limiting it to the frontages on these main streets. And if you had another building out back, it's not held to that same room. I mean, this this definitely helps that viability argument.
I certainly think if we were to sort of rework Amendment One to kind of encompass this conversation. It would definitely be something I would be supportive of.
Any other discussions on these amendments before by Counselor Mash Taro?
We didn't talk about height. I'm assuming.
Yeah, but me, but that.
You do?
No, no. Yeah. It really wasn't an arbitrary number. I. I chose. I know somebody has mentioned, you know, let's change the the height. Oh, to stories. You would agree with me beyond this is, you know, that. A lobby, first floor could may have twelve foot ceilings and then if the floor is above it, it can have ten foot ceiling, so. So an eight story building could be a hundred feet, right? Probably not, but. I just thought anything over eighty feet is a bit obtrusive for. For the city. And as far as. Somebody brought up engineering goes. The laws to be engineered before it's even built. We're not probably talking about. Adding five or six floors on a three story building, existing three, four story building. Because once you get up above, I think, four stories, it's it's steel construction now. So.
So I think I like eighty feet. Some places have, there's a desire to have a six story cap. And from a construction feasibility standpoint, six stories, you're more likely to see a four or five story building, but six stories would be the max before you get into. High rise construction, which is prohibitively expensive, especially in a market like this. So.
Six story building could be eighty feet.
At at the most. Sometimes what you see is a regulation that kind of is wanting a six story building, but it's like sixty eight feet or something. And the architects have to go to great lengths to get, to shave off a few more feet here and there, and it kind of becomes arbitrary. So this gives you a comfortable buffer to to kind of deal with topography. Sometimes, you know, if you're on a slope, where's the grid? Or you have to raise the building a little bit for ADA reasons, grading reasons. This gives you the flexibility to get to a six story building. If someone can make that pencil. And but it it, I mean, but we're comfortable with that number two, just kind of conceptually also. So I think it's a good compromise and it will help promote more development up to six stories.
Yeah, that was just my comment of stories versus feet, because I know there was a recommendation that. Where you can switch to stories instead of using a fee requirement, so.
The character has to be a big trouble with all the laws or something. They change a bunch of codes or something that we changed from.
Changed the whole. Do we really want to do that?
I mean, I think we would be, I would be advocating for six stories if that were the the measure. So eighty feet. You know, sells that argument, it's right.
Right.
Should be easy to fit six stories within eighty feet.
Here we are.
All right, so I'm gonna agree on that amendment.
Any questions on the proposed amendments to the ADU ordinance?
Yeah, I had some comments slash questions, I guess you would say. So I I heard from public comment that, you know, we're. Not making it more restrictive, but I want to make sure I'm understanding this because we have protected ADUs and unprotected ADUs from how I read this. And a protected ADU would be on a single family lot. Which is around by right.
First one on a single family.
Allowed by right. Anything over that would require special permit. It would be an unprotected ADU. We're not saying you can't build an ADU on a on a two family lot. It would just be an unprotected ADU and require a special permit.
Correct. So the statements made earlier about we're not required, we are requiring a special permit for unprotected ADUs. The the only thing that we're doing here is meeting the minimum requirements of law for single families. Situation saying that anybody with a single family home can do a protected ADU, period. Now, anything above and beyond a protected ADU, we're calling an unprotected ADU, requires a special permit.
And then going back to enforcement. That section about enforcement that mentions the building inspector, that applies to protected ADUs, correct? Or is that would that be in?
That would be protected ADUs, correct? Because the special permit granting authority would deal with approval of unprotected.
Thank you. I just want to make that clarification because they were both brought up and I think the way it's written is perfectly fine. I think you guys did a phenomenal job.
Goes back to my original question. I don't think we should make it more restrictive than the current zoning laws. If the current zoning law allows a single family residential use to build up to three dwelling units on their property by right. We shouldn't make it any stricter than that. If they go beyond what's already allowed by right, then we could ask for the special permits. But if by right they can build up to three dwelling units on a single family residential zoning area, that's correct?
Correct, within the same building. As soon as it's not in the same building, it becomes detached. Now you're talking about a detached accessory dwelling. If it's, somebody has a single family home and they want to add two units within the same building, they can do that by right. Attach it with an addition, they can do that by right and have three units.
Really only concerned about detached.
Yes.
Correct.
So. So what what we're saying now is if you build, you can build one detached and that's protected. Any more detached requires a special permit.
Correct.
It doesn't affect if you have your home and you've built two little bungalows on either side that are attached to the house, you can do that by right. And we're not changing that.
Correct.
And what what about in the two family that you were going to put the ADU inside the unit? That is currently. And would that still be the case under this?
Yeah, it wouldn't be called an ADU, it'd be called the third unit.
Right.
Right, so the current zoning law allows that, but so would this, really, as a.
Right, we're not even touching that. That's hasn't changed.
So if you create an ADU in your current space, but then want to add a detached, that's when you have a.
Well, the first one is allowed.
It's not an, the first one's not an ADU because it's just another unit.
If it's detached, if it's detached, the first detached one is allowed. It's the additional, we put more than one detached, that's what we.
If you have a two family right now, you can't add a detached ADU unless you go a special permit, but currently you can.
No, currently you.
Detached is currently requires a special permit, period.
Detached period now required, which goes against the law.
It's really not going backwards on. Because the detached requires it.
So you could add a unit within your house that's not an ADU. So you could add a unit within your house that's not an ADU. And you would still be able to add a. Detached, sorry, detached.
That one would be special permit because you're a two family, you've turned your one family into two families, but you, we could still do it detached. So one thing, Erica, I wanted to point out was I think D two. Should say only one protected accessory dwelling unit be created within a single family house or lot. Maybe we mentioned, maybe. That was what we pointed out is prohibiting additional ADUs.
Yeah, that was just, uh, me missing that one section there and then that one word protective, which doesn't change the intent at all. Right there, add that one word.
Does the E one B have to be removed? Where it says the original, the applicant will follow the same. See, you're describing this, or you need to include the submission of an authorized letter declaring owner occupancy.
Yeah, cause you striked it in D seven.
Uh, yeah, that needs to be stricken. E one B needs to be stricken, thank you for that.
I'll point it out, I'll, I'll discuss tomorrow.
I don't really have any more questions on our side about the ADUs, any other city councilors want to talk about the ADUs? I see nobody, um. With that being said, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn the EDC meeting? And we'll do a roll call vote. I'm a yes. Councilor Mash Tarot, Councilor Jordan?
Yes.
Uh, President Wondolowski?
Yes.
Right, we are closing our meeting at seven fourteen. All right, and do we have a motion to close, do we close ours now too?
Look at action.
You want to close the public hearing, but.
Oh, the public hearing.
So they're.
They're closing their meeting now.
Yes.
Okay. Good.
Just one quick question, uh, can you let me know who did the motion and the second to adjourn, I didn't catch that.
That was, uh, Councilor, uh, President Wondolowski made the motion and Councilor Mash Tarot.
I need more continuously, you need to go to. Yep, that's how it is.
Welcome to stay.
Yeah, we got a couple of action items. But nothing on those.
Have a good night.
Nothing on the petitions, that's in March. No, oh, it does say planning board deliberation on zoning amendments, okay.
We haven't did all that. Well, we haven't put forward a, a, a motion on. Whether or not to recommend it, right?
Exactly.
And that's what we're doing next.
Yes.
On both of the ones we just discussed.
Exactly.
Okay.
These are our action items.
Yep, yes, all right, so moving on to item five. Action items. So the first action item here, planning board deliberation and recommendation to the city council on the proposed zoning amendments to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance and site plan review and approval ordinance to meet the Affordable Homes Act. And to consider amendments to mixed residential business uses, height requirements and multifamily and CC. So we have deliberated, I think.
You got all of them.
A little bit more if we want.
No.
So I think what we, what we've done in the past, this is my second time being the chair, so.
Feel good.
I think is we, one by one, decide if we want to take an action and if so, what action.
Yeah, if we recommend or not recommend.
And so we could start with the, might as well start down, start with the ADU.
Yep.
Yeah. And so we've made a couple of minor tweaks today, just for clarification and consistency, but nothing substantial. So I think we would move to recommend the slightly revised version of the amendment.
Like a positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation.
Yes. Second.
Any further discussion?
Do we do have to do this roll call because Erica, or is she not voting, so you don't need to?
I think we do with Sarah.
Of Sarah.
Yes, it actually. I'm lying, yes, I.
I, I was impressed with, with his rules of.
Yeah.
Or the procedure of.
Yeah.
We'll all vote. And so is Erica?
Erica's not voting. But Sarah's.
Sarah's, yeah, correct, got it, okay.
Any discussion to add to the?
Yeah, did Erica or Sarah, did you have any further discussion before we start moving on the? Before we.
No, I'm good. No, I don't either.
Great.
Let's take a vote.
Let's take a look.
I.
Sir.
I.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
And that's with the small changes. Minor changes.
And do we need to like itemize those off, or do you have those?
No, I, I have those.
Great. All right, moving on to amendment number. Do we need to also separately talk about the site plan review one?
Yes.
Okay, so. We didn't discuss it clear, there's a different site plan review and approval only pertaining to. The ADUs, it's not bigger picture site plan review. Just, we have, we had to make this one change to keep things consistent with how ADUs are treated in the other, uh, part of the ordinance. So any other questions or discussion on, on that piece?
So we are or we are not requiring site plan review on the allowable ADU. So the first one is allowed.
We are not.
Right, we are not requiring a site plan review.
Cannot.
The only time we have a site plan review that requires a special permit, cause that's a special permit required.
Or an unprotected accessory dwelling.
Which requires a special permit.
Yes.
So we had a long discussion about that at the last planning board meeting and the, I was, it was unattributed, it was attributed to me when it really was Jeff. Where he talked about why that's really an invasion of privacy. Yeah, we wouldn't have to leave the garage or a lunch shop or any.
Right.
Why, why make an ADU different, okay, so we're fine, so our recommendation is that there is no site plan review required. For a, a protected ADU detached, whatever, but, all right, I'm good with that.
And the change we're actually making to the code is to strike the word two and change it to the word three. And add the word unprotected as the type of ADU that require site plan review, so that's. Yeah, exactly, it's just a consistency.
Okay.
Change, so.
We're not stripping anything away, we're not burning the town down.
Not yet, that's right. No, and we do, I think we'll have bigger, we could have further conversations about other parts of site plan, but this is the only thing we're changing in this case.
Correct.
Okay, uh, so, do I have a motion to issue a positive recommendation to the city council?
I'll suck it to motion, or I'll make the motion to forward a positive recommendation.
All sets.
Any further discussion?
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
Um, just FYI, for, if, for people who don't know that, the building inspector, when you are putting a new. Structure on any property, regardless of whether site plan review is required or not, they are going to go out there and measure and make sure you are in compliance with setbacks. So a lot of people worry about that, I just want to say, the building inspector does that.
Well, the clarification, the building inspector has a sign off process, and one of them is Department of Planning and Development.
Your, your point, Erica, is exactly right, and furthermore, the health department checks to make sure that something can accommodate it, I mean, there's. Lots of construction by right or not.
Right, there are lots of, there are lots of gate checks through a whole process of building anything, so for a lot of people out there who have concerns about all sorts of things. There are so many checkpoints along the way to make sure things are done as per the intent of our zoning bylaws, so people should not worry.
Great point. Okay, let's vote.
I.
I was.
I.
All right, I. Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to. And now, let's.
I don't remember this one. I have a refusal. That that property, so we didn't recommend the vote?
Oh, we're still, we have three more amendments to talk about. So, amendment number. Amendment number one, uh, the, this is the one that.
Mixed, uh, mixed use.
Hours mixed use, I, I would suggest that we issue a recommendation that we hold off on voting on this until we make. Modifications.
Table, we table it, it doesn't, can we just table it this meeting in, in the future, so, or do we have to make a recommendation?
Let's think about the timing of this, um, the EDC is gonna meet next week on this. I think they said next week, right, yes, next week, so they're gonna probably vote next week and try to get it on April agenda. If the board waits, then hold a special meeting, then it would put it off further, cause you would have to vote at the April meeting.
But what are we gonna vote on, cause we didn't actually iron it all out, we kind of discussed it.
I'm saying that, uh, the EDC will probably forward what they come up with with the exact boundaries as discussed with the planning board today, and they'd have the proposed exact language.
Do we need to vote on it as well?
You would need to, yes, forward a positive or negative recommendation to the city council.
We'll have to wait till we see what they do, I mean.
You know, um, the only way is to wait to see what they do unless you. Issue a negative recommendation that's currently written.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I, I think that's, we just have to wait. I think I have to wait till they define it, we wouldn't, we didn't define it, I mean, we said this. Well, in fact, we specifically decided not to, and said, it needs to get really kind of looked at a little closer, make sure we're good.
Does that slow anything down?
It might, but so it gets put off that one amendment for a month, it needs to be reviewed as one, once it's fully vetted.
If we wanted to avoid slowing it down, what type of recommendation would we give? Could we give a provisional or conditional recommendation? Or do we want to see what they come up with with their map?
It's important, it's zoning, right. So, this is what happens, one, you come up with the exact boundaries yourself based on the discussion, you're probably real close to what the EDC is gonna do. Or you can wait for the EDC to see what they come up with and put the vote off.
So you say there's a nice little drawing showing where it is right now, right, up and down?
Yeah, I mean.
Make a recommendation that we say. We support this in this, so whatever they come up with as far as, as long as they don't go outside of that, we're fine with what they do insider.
Yeah.
No, how far does that things carry down federal?
I can't. Uh, it goes to.
Turns to like a.
Pleasant and Church.
Pleasant.
Okay.
I mean, I think we were talking at, at minimum going to Pleasant and Church, and it turns out that's the extent of this district anyway.
So we could say.
But we wanted to find it to the street, so, so it goes way back in here, so.
Main, federal and bank row in the central commercial district, and that.
Yes.
That is what we were looking.
Yeah, it's full range of.
So why don't we just? I mean, if that's what we.
They're gonna recommend it.
I would think so, yeah. I think if that's really what we support as a group, I think we could put that forward as.
So we make a positive recommendation to go with that amendment on, but to reduce it to, to limit it to this. The commercial, the commercial business district, what do we call it? Central commercial, central commercial district.
Already made. Yeah.
On Main, Bank and Federal.
Correct.
Is there a specific? Is there a language we should be using, Eric, or, you know, to, to do that kind of limit?
Uh, yes, um, usually the board lets me come up with a good language when I do the meeting minutes and you. Minute voting, it's clear, I mean, the tent is clear, there's gonna be that you're gonna forward a positive recommendation on this. Uh, as further amended to include Main Street, Federal Street. And Bank Row within.
What's been limited?
Limiting it to.
Well, we're gonna stay with the required, there's a recommendation to get rid of the required, we're gonna stay with the required for that, so. I think given how tight it is.
Yeah, right.
We're staying with required.
We, we, we have to be clear though, is Main Street exactly High Street to Coal Rain?
Well, here would be from Franklin, cause the district ends at Franklin Street.
Yep.
We're talking about High Street.
Yeah, but I think, but I.
But it won't go that far.
Yeah, cause the amendment only pertains to the CC district in the first place.
Well, it does, but you can further restrict that and say, we, only from Main, High Street to Coal Rain Street within the CC district, federal to whatever.
What I'm saying is the CC district doesn't itself go all the way to, like here's high, so the CC district stops at Franklin anyway.
I see, it didn't go to High Street.
Yeah, I mean, we might want to see commercial down there, but that's.
Oh, I get you, yeah, yeah, you're a hundred percent right, yep.
And, and it's, so it's limited to.
So you can do resident, you could do ground for a residential past. That's right. Well, it's Franklin Street.
That's Franklin, and it's just one block.
And what's it on the other side?
It goes down to Solon Street, down to the bridge, basically.
On the, on the other side.
On the other side of Main, on the other end of Main Street, on the west side.
Erica, do you think that's too far?
Well, you know, it's interesting, cause there is commercial there, but it's more of a, a suburban type. You know, with the parking, drive in, and then you've got the UPS store and you've got the kitchen cabinet store. I would say Coal Rain is, should be your cutoff.
Yeah, but we're only worried about mixed use, so that, people would still build commercial without an apartment building above.
Well, if we say Main Street specifically, Main Street starts at Toyota of Greenfield, that is one main.
Oh, there it is, nice.
Yeah.
And that takes into account Fort Square, because you've got commercial on that, that block between Fort Square and Conway.
Yes. Okay, thank you. You guys know your address is not here.
We're gonna say we would, we would forward a positive recommendation to, for this zoning amendment. For Main Street, Federal Street and Bank Row in the central commercial district.
Yeah, it's limited to those frontages.
That's the motion, that's the motion I make.
Okay, okay, any further discussion, we've got a motion on the table? All right, shall we? Vote, yeah.
I.
Make a motion again.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Jess?
Yes.
We're gonna get you to say hi.
All right, next.
Height requirements, we've already agreed.
Yeah, number two is height requirement, so we can.
Let us ask the question about the, um, the lower requirement. For the other district, and what's the logic for that one versus the eighty feet in the central?
Typically downtowns are have higher buildings than the surrounding commercial districts, typically, didn't mean, and that's the, that was the reasoning behind. Cause I.
Are there any types of structures or buildings that we're trying to accommodate? And does that?
Apartments.
Apartments, residential apartments, can more apartment, because we can't, we don't have enough space to build subdivisions really in Ford. Just mainly apartments.
Yeah, like you talked about snows, that'd be a pretty, pretty good apartment.
Right, it's, cause it snows out and then build a nice four, five, six story building.
So, we're talking about the, now we're talking about the GC district.
Yeah, lighter pink area. I think the only buildings that I can think of in those areas that are anywhere close to the height limit currently would be the Arbers. And the hotel.
Uh, can you get one apart?
Uh, it's four stories.
So we're already allowed eighty feet in the.
I, I know there's that commercial area, that, that lot that's been on the market for a long time. And I don't know what the possible uses are there, what people are thinking about and what the height.
Which property, the one that, just before the.
Is it the one that was gonna be an auto place?
Right, here, yeah, right next to Applebee's.
Yeah.
Oh, one twenty pound mall, actually.
Yes, used to be the roadway and.
Yeah, that seems like a pretty desirable spot for.
Same with the lot that's right on the corner of the road.
And that's enough, that would be a six and foot height limit there, and is that, I, I'm just asking whether that's sufficient, that's all.
I wouldn't expect it taller than, I mean, I think you'd get a four story residential building in that context, so sixty feet is more than enough for that.
What about a hotel?
Hotel would.
Well, the hotel was proposed for that, it was a four story hotel. It just never moved forward the project.
Have a reason.
It happened and they ran out of money.
Yes.
And these are absolute limits, so you can't go any above, or would you need a special permit even to get to them?
You could request a variant.
Oh, it's requested.
There'd be a variant, so it's difficult to get.
Could you draw by special permit, if we wrote that in?
If you wrote it in.
So. Could we allow up to sixty by right and up to eighty by special permit?
I think we agreed on eighty already.
Kind of the outline around downtown and then also.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, sixty by right and special permit up to eighty, to match what we have everywhere else.
And that's, I mean, I, I think depending on what the use was down there, it could, it would be fine, it just, and we don't have a whole lot of big commercial space. So it feels like that would give us some possibilities with that space.
big commercial space, so it feels like that would give us some possibilities with that space.
I feel like if you allow up to sixty, that's reasonable, and if you go above that, I could see based on some of the outline areas of that district allowing the, the neighborhoods to have a, a greater, say, um, up to eighty. But that would keep the two heights consistent, but still allow the neighborhoods to sort of retain their voice. I would support that.
The chairman?
Yep.
I think this would be a significant change to require a new public care.
Okay, to do this.
To do the special form component of it.
Okay.
It's all about less restrictive or more restrictive, to make that determination whether it's a substantive change to require a new public care.
Yeah, that's good.
So we want to, I could support it either way. I just threw it out there as a.
Yes, you're saying if it's less restrictive, you can do it without a new hearing.
Yes. This is being more restrictive because it's now.
Less restrictive because you're allowing higher heights?
No, because you're, you're impacting the neighborhood, and they may not want to see that increase height, and they need to come in and speak about that, which they don't have the opportunity without a new public care.
I see.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Makes sense. I understand the consequence of the process where.
That makes sense.
May not just appear and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that's fine. This can be something we deal with later.
Yeah, I don't see sixty feet limiting the sorts of things that I would expect to see in these parts of town personally.
Yeah. Great, that's right.
This motion to accept amendment two is written.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Victor, you want to lead us off again?
Hi. Yes.
Hi.
Yes. Sarah?
Yes.
All right, number three. So this one is the mixed, so, once, we're talking about mixed residential business uses, when you have a mixed-use building, it has to have first, any first-floor dwelling units in that building have to be ADA compliant and on the street that's not the primary, you know, busy street. Uh, and first-floor commercial space shall occupy no more than fifty, fifty percent of the first-floor square footage. But as we talked about, that would be interpreted as just the building that's on that front. It's not necessarily the entire development project if there's multiple buildings. I don't quite understand the B, it didn't seem meaningful to me, but can't mix business use and residential use in upper floors. You know, why that's in there?
It's saying that anything that's mixed with resident uses above the first floor has to be office only, not retail or something like.
Retail or manufacturing or something like that.
Yeah, just office.
The people don't, are not living above and active.
Yeah, so it's noisy or disruptive in some ways.
Got it.
It shuts down after five theoretically or something.
And actually, in a lot of urban areas, that's a pretty standard thing, where you have retail on the ground floor, office on the second, and then everything above that is residential.
Yeah, okay.
It's a very common mix, and it's economically very viable and very successful.
Good, okay.
Motion to accept amendment three as proposed.
I can.
Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Hi. Hi.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Play along. And that concludes action item five A. All right, action items five P, planning board recommendation to the mayor on the city of Greenfield's right of first refusal for chapter sixty-one B. Release of a portion of one thirty-nine Sylvia O'Conde Drive parcel R zero five dash twenty-four E.
So I can, uh, explain to the board what this is. Once in a while, we, we receive this, um. With the city always has the right of first refusal for any land that is put into what's called chapter sixty-one A, B, or C. Chapter sixty-one is a current use taxation law. So you get tax on the current use and not on the developed high invest use of the property. So if somebody puts their property into an agricultural use, or a forest use, or recreation use under chapter sixty-one, their taxes are reduced greatly. Um, but if they sell that, their property, and take it out of chapter sixty-one, the city now has what's called the right of first refusal. We can buy that land if we want. I mean, so the, the purpose of it going before different boards, like the Conservation Commission already took a vote. They have no, see no use for the city to retain that land, so they said, no problem. We shouldn't avail ourselves of the right of first refusal. If this board thinks that the city has a use for private industrial land in industrial park, then you would recommend that the city avail itself of its right of first refusal. Obviously, this is land from Northeast Bio Diesel. Only a small portion of that several acre parcel is for the development. The rest of it, they put in this chapter sixty-one. And now they're taking it out because they're selling the property. I see no use for the city to have this property.
But it's taken out of that tax bracket, so whatever the new usage has a new tax rate.
Correct.
It's fine. As long as the tax rate can change, if someone built a factory on it.
Do you, uh, do you happen to have the parcel map?
He has a picture of it right there. It's, uh, actually, let me see if it has a parcel on there. R O five dash twenty-four E.
Can't see through the screen. The twenty-four E is that whole lot. So I presume the sixty-one B is for everything except for the building and its parking lot. Because it doesn't delineate a separate.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Building lot. There's twenty-four. No, that's the, that's some noise.
Yeah, as long as it goes back to a tax space, I don't think you need to buy it.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree. It just returns it to its regular tax state?
Okay, this makes it neutral. So if you put something on there that.
Yeah, I mean, this is the vote that you are taking today.
This is why I buy it.
It's if the mayor should avail herself of the right of first refusal, which is, and we, we can, we have the first right of it.
Okay.
To buy the property.
So we're just saying whether or not we accept the, the mayor's rejection of the city's right of first refusal. Not necessarily its tax classification.
Exactly. Nothing about the tax classification, just the negative or positive recommendation to the mayor on that right of first refusal.
The basis for our decision could be whether or not we think that's a really valuable piece of land that the city should own.
Correct.
Or whatever purpose.
I think the majority of it is.
Is there some other? I know that that land is, there aren't, there isn't that much industrial land left in town, but is it, so it's being, there's an offer on it now, and we can intervene and get in front of the line? Is that what's happening, or?
Yes.
Do you know what's?
They're, they're, on the map, there's listed as a twenty-foot sewer easement. Is there any feedback from the DPW on that?
No, I mean, since there isn't easement down there, they're all set. They can avail themselves of that easement and do what they need to do.
So if we said, don't act on the first refusal right, what would happen to it?
It will get sold, and the city would not involve itself in the sale.
Seems like we would, if we didn't like who was buying it, you know, that would change the, do we know who's buying it and what the use is gonna be?
Um, not relevant, really. I mean, it's really about, do you think the city has a use of that property?
Not, I mean, obviously not for city business. It would just be to make sure that something, the biggest, best thing possible could happen there.
In, in that case, the city would have to avail itself of the right to buy the property and then market and doing our feed for, preferred developer to come in and develop it just for certain goals that the city has. If this is an I ninety-one industrial park that is well-known in the area, Franklin County has a lack of industrial space. Be a high premium for that space. I imagine that somebody's gonna come in and utilize that space as industry, as part of an industrial park.
Just on the market, without our.
Without, yeah, on the market by itself.
Yeah, okay.
I think we decline the offer.
Aren't there some brownfields on there, too? Or it's being monitored. It's, isn't that the parcel that's being monitored for brownfields, for contaminants from the past?
I don't think so.
It's not that one?
No, I don't think so. Not aware of any brownfield sites in the industrial park.
Okay.
Too new, right?
Yeah.
It's too new.
Okay. Any other problems or questions, right? Do we have a motion to recommend that the mayor?
We decline, yeah, we decline the off.
Fine, yeah.
We decline the offer of first refusal. Your body? Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none.
Hi.
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 Yes, Sarah?
Hi.
All right. We all go home then.
No, we can't. All right, action item.
Such a big accomplishment.
Item five C, planning board discussion response to the open meeting law complaint filed by Stephanie DuKloos relative to the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting, planning board.
So what are we supposed to do here?
So, do we read the complaint, or maybe summarize?
Sure, um. The, the good thing about this open meeting complaint form is that it gives instructions on
Okay.
various entities that, what they need to do.
Okay.
So instructions for a public body that receives a complaint, in this case, the planning board. The chair must disseminate the complaint to the members of the public body, which we did. Public body must meet to review the complaint within fourteen business days, which we have. This meeting was within that timeframe. After review, but within fourteen business days, the public body must respond to the complaint in writing and must send the complainant a response and a description of any action the public body has taken to address it. At the same time, the body must send the attorney general a copy of the response. Public body may delegate this responsibility to its council or a staff member, but only after it has met to review the complaint. If a public body, yeah. If a public body requires more time to review the complaint and respond, it may request an extension of time for good cause by contacting the division of open government.
So can you read the complaints itself?
The complaint itself, yes. I will just read this. Uh, this is the text filled in for the complaint. I would, this is from Stephanie DuKloos. I would like to submit an open meeting law complaint against the acting chairman of the planning board, Jeff Saucer. Meeting was not accessible through the calendar link. This was the third time George Stilmsen said encountered the same problem with the link on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and this, the subsequent rescheduled meeting on both February sixth, twenty twenty-five shut the meeting down last time because the exact same issue with the calendar. Bringing a, an attendee to a January second meeting, which never let anyone into the meeting. Ryan Whitney and I drove to the John's on to identify this issue to the board, and they disregarded the concerns of access despite the city council voted in guaranteed hybrid meetings under chapter forty-nine, article three, hybrid meetings. Subsection forty-nine dash six, despite this being brought to the attention of the board, the acting chair, Jeff Saucer continued the meeting despite the calendar link not being accessible. It is not acceptable to say, well, it was acceptable on their agenda, which they received via email. The calendar link is the way the average citizen would access the meeting. The fact that it was able to be found after ten minutes of trying to get into the meeting by me does not exonerate the board from complying with the open meeting laws and ordinances adopted by the city council. Finding an embedded link to the meeting under a planning board document was beyond the time the public comment would have been allowed and would have taken far longer, if successful at all for those who have no idea where else to find access to the meeting. There were two other members of the public attending in person, yet did not give a public statement for the record as they believe the meeting would for the third time be rescheduled once they have been made aware of violation of the past request to fix this particular link access issue and brought to the attention of the public body on multiple occasions.
Okay, so on the calendar, there's just a link, but the agenda is on the calendar. You can get the agenda as well?
Well, on the city's website.
Correct.
There is, under government, boards and commissions.
Right.
One of them is planning board, and you can always access the agenda, meeting minutes and board packet, and the meeting agenda has a link and access codes on it. The second thing is the meeting calendar on the city website. That also has the link to the meeting.
But just, but just the link. It does not have the meeting number and the passcode.
Nope, it has everything. It has the passcode, it has the same information, the agenda.
Okay, then, then to me, it's not an issue.
Yeah, and, um, I had, um, the opportunity to get, do a training by the attorney general's office uh, a couple of weeks ago on the open meeting law. And I asked, which was very useful. I mean, I, they kind of walked it all through great detail. And then they provided a Q and A opportunity, so I teed up the two questions that I was aware of that we're dealing with. And asked the assistant attorney general, is this a violation of open meeting law? And she gave in both cases a very explicit, definitive answer, so. Um, on the question, and that was a, the, the main question here is if a meeting is being, this is what I asked her. If a meeting is being held both in person and online via Zoom, does the in-person meeting have to be canceled if the online link becomes inoperable? That's, is there a right to an online participation if the in-person meeting is occurring? And what she said to me was two things quite relevant. One was, no, if you have the in-person meeting and it's going on as advertised, and the Zoom links for the virtual one is not working, you do not have to cancel the meeting, and it is not a violation of open meeting law. She said not a requirement for Zoom access to the meeting. Was very definitive.
I'm actually present in the meeting, so I would like to interject. We have a.
Stephanie, could you hold please?
Chapter forty-nine, article three on hybrid meetings, that supersedes what the state requires. It actually gave more restrictive uh, requirements within our own city code on what must be complied with.
Um, what I asked was there, is there an open meeting law violation? And the assistant attorney general said, no, there is not a requirement to have a Zoom uh, access to a meeting if you also have an in-person meeting that is accessible.
But we did have Zoom access to the meeting.
We did, but, now here's second. They also said that the, each public body has to have an official place that the meeting is advertised and that this information will be available. And she said that's typically the city clerk's office where these are posted. That is the only place that is required for the open meeting law. The calendar, they said this specifically, they said, if you have a calendar link, that is not the official place. They actually said, we don't advise having more than one, because it, what happens is that sometimes they don't all get updated and you have, run into this problem. So if there would be an official Zoom requirement, it would be on the, uh, meeting that was advertised at the official place, which would have been the city council. It would, I mean, the city clerk. It would not, the, the calendar section is not official and is not relevant for open meeting law, they said.
For open meeting law.
For open meeting law. This is just open meeting law stuff. I wasn't focused on anything else. It was just, we have a open meeting law violation. Is it one?
Okay.
And it does not, it, it was very clear, there's not.
There was Zoom access, so.
And this was from, um, Harry Kilcoin, the assistant attorney general.
Okay, okay.
Thank you for getting that clarification.
It just was, you know, I, I just.
Appreciate that.
But it was live, it was there, and this has just come up, so.
And with Zoom meetings, I'm sure there's lots of questions like that, so.
There were a lot of questions.
Okay, so the, per the advice of the assistant attorney general, yep, it was not an open meeting law violation. Then, so how do we respond in that case?
We would, uh, based on this meeting and the meeting minutes, I would write up a response, um, to send to, yes, I just refresh myself on procedure, definitely to the attorney general's office, but I think also to the complainant. Yes, uh, so we, I would draft up a response with your approval.
Okay.
And.
Related issue is that, um.
Related issue is that, um, it wasn't a public hearing, it was just a meeting of the planning board, um, and there isn't a right for the public to speak unless it's a public hearing, they said, so the open meeting law. And I think that was part of our thinking was, we're not in a public hearing. There's going to be an opportunity at the next one for the public hearing.
They can report it, they can listen to it, and there were people there as well who decided to leave, so.
Yeah, and that's the point in the minutes.
Yep.
And I re, I emailed Eric the next morning to make sure that the recording was posted and so I, I don't, I didn't think in the moment that anyone had missed an opportunity to follow along when there wasn't a public hearing. If there was a public hearing, we might have acted differently, but there was not an opportunity to have a public comment anyway, so.
There, there is, there, there seems to be an issue with the calendar page.
Yes.
So that, I don't know who handles that.
Things, but. One, just to I gave you what's on the website, I, I missed the third step, which is what attorney general is telling you. Um, they always get sent, uh, something separate than the agenda, it's a public meeting notice, it's, it's emulates the agenda. But it has all the Zoom link information and access codes on that. Gets sent to the clerk for every single land use board meeting I deal with. And that is the official posting.
That's, they said, that's the only one that matters.
Yes, yes, exactly. And, but we did find, uh, Matthew Conway from the mayor's office did discover a bug, he called it, in the Zoom software. We were doing all the steps correctly, but there was a synchronization step that he discovered a bug in the Zoom that he's going to monitor and fix every meeting now, so we shouldn't have these issues in the future, but previous comments remain. Everyone did their job right, nobody missed a thing, it was a bug in the Zoom.
I agree. We could say in our response, though, that regardless of whether or not it was officially an open meeting violation, the action being taken is to try to avoid this type of confusion in the future. And there's someone who stepped up at the city to take on checking every week to make sure that all the links, that's great. Regardless of the legality, that's a very productive and helpful, resolucious.
Sarah's, hands are handed.
Sarah?
Yeah, so, um, I was, I do think this is an issue that needs to be fixed. I clicked on the link from the agenda to join, um, today and it said the meeting was scheduled for January fourth, or something like that, so.
Second.
It was a, yeah, it was an old link, so I, I did join using the meeting ID and passcode, which worked. But most people won't know to do that and they will, you know, I don't know, potentially give up, um. So, yeah. Uh, the link is, is, I think it's important that that be accurate.
So just for clarification sake, Sarah, you're saying that occurred this meeting? An issue with the link?
Yeah, I don't know if it was, you know, my personal issue, but I, I did have to use the meeting ID and passcode.
Let's just get rid of the, the link and just put ID and passcode. Just give them a link to Zoom and then just ID and passcode.
Yeah, because I clicked the link before we even started the meeting and was able to join right off of the calendar link.
On your phone.
I think Sarah might be talking about the agenda link?
Agenda, yeah.
Okay.
So I'm hoping, wait, there's so many.
Oops, I used the calendar link and I didn't have to enter a passcode, I came right in, just in case.
So that, that seems to be working now.
That's right, yeah.
I mean, what does the board think about the AG's recommendation of just only having the link, access codes and all that in one place so that we avoid all this confusion?
Yeah, but it, but it's, it would be in a place that's hard for people to access, it feels like, you know, I, I agree with that, this, the calendar seems to be a place that you would go, you know?
But, okay, so today, the, if I get it clear, the calendar worked, but the meeting agenda didn't.
Correct, Sarah said it didn't work because she tried it and had to use a passcode, but Pete said it did work because he tried it on his phone.
He, he did the calendar and she did.
Oh, yes, Stephanie, what do you use?
I clicked on the, the, um, PD, the link in the PDF, agenda.
Okay, she, she.
I used the link on the EDC joint meeting because I know that that one is correct.
Okay. So there's three places this time.
Yeah, this is kind of making their point, isn't it? Yeah, they should have a lot of places, you're going to run into trouble. You're going to run into trouble, the AG's advice is very good here.
I would say we should circle back with the city clerk and
alright.
tighten up how the city posts its meetings and make sure that they're coordinating with Matt Conway's bug identification.
Well, the clerk manages the calendar, right? The clerk's office?
No.
Oh, no? Oh.
No, each, each department manages it, whatever it needs to separately.
Okay. Yeah, that could be a problem.
All right, well, we decide we haven't violated open meeting, we still have to decide how we're going to go move forward and provide our information.
Exactly.
So we need to think about that a little bit more. Okay.
Well, the board should do that right now so that I can come up with a response and meet this deadline to send this up into the AG's office.
Excuse me, huh, um, I'm just wanting some clarification if I want to appeal that. Do you know the days? Um, do you know how many days?
How many days left to?
No, how many days, once you have written your response to me, how many days beyond that I have to appeal the decision?
Let me see if this addresses that. Once the public body has responded to the complaint, okay, if you are not satisfied with the public body's response to your complaint, you may file a copy of the complaint with the division by mail, email, or by hand, but only once you have waited thirty days after filing the complaint with the public body. When you file your complaint with the division, please include the complaint form and all documentation relevant to the alleged violation. You may wish to attach a cover letter explaining why the public body's response does not adequately address your complaint. The division will not review complaints filed with us more than ninety days after the violation unless we grant it an extension for good cause. Does that answer your question, Stephanie?
Yes, it does. So that would be, just to clarify a date, thirty days would be March eighteenth? Or is that thirty days after I receive your response?
I think it said thirty days after you.
Filed, filed, filed the complaint.
Oh, let me see.
Filed the complaint.
Yes. Thirty days after filing the complaint to our public bodies, yes.
The thirty business days or thirty calendar days?
Uh, let's see.
This.
Just as.
Thirty, thirty days.
Specific files. So usually, uh, anything over, yeah, it's usually just calendar days.
Okay. Okay, so our.
Yeah, I just wanted a hard date that you, you know, but that's fine. If it's thirty calendar days, then I know I have a few more days, thanks.
Okay. So the response would be our response is, can we defer to what Matthew's going to do? We recommend, it seems like if we just didn't have links everywhere, it'd be more, you have to type in more codes, but it's less likely to have something break. Is that what, the same every time, every meeting?
So.
You have to change the code every time.
So when you, when you do Zoom, you can do recurring meetings and it gives you this same that's the issue that Matthew Conway discovered. When you do recurring meetings, you should be able to use this exact code every meeting with the, with the numbers, it should work every time. Okay, he's finding a synchronization issue with synchronizing with city hall or other locations where we hold the public meetings.
Um, well, seemingly the problem is, is the link to the meeting, so if we just, again, we just want to give them a link to Zoom and then they put in the passcode, the meeting ID and passcode.
The bug goes beyond that, though. We're already doing everything you said and there's still an issue because there's a bug in Zoom. Uh, and then Matthew Conway said this bug in Zoom, he, he has to go in there and make sure it's synchronized properly. Yeah, I don't even know what, what that means, but, uh, he, he does, so he.
It's just like they're the ones to solve this, we're telling them there's a problem.
Yeah.
And what the problem is. We're trying to draft a letter saying what our resolution is.
I, I know, but I mean, it's our resolution. So right now, the meeting calendar, the, the public meeting notice to the city clerk and the agenda has the exact same link supposedly that should be, it, it, it is the exact linked number and the codes are exactly the same. How that's synchronized to this equipment here in other rooms is, is beyond me and that's the, the bug issue that he mentioned in Zoom.
So there's nothing different about any of the links?
No, no, they're, he's saying for recurring meetings, you should be able to use the exact same link without having to resynchronize it.
But they're not always recurring meetings, like the eighteenth wasn't a recurring meeting. That was a special meeting, a recurring meeting is the first Thursday.
Yeah, exactly.
So the other ones are not recurring meetings.
But one of these issues happened on a recurring meeting.
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
Well, I, I would say we could just defer to Matthew's resolution and see if it works.
Yeah, I would say, oh, I can mention because his email's specific what he's going to do.
Sounds like I understand what's going on, so.
Yeah, so I can actually use that in the response.
Okay.
Makes sense.
We need, is that a motion or?
Drafting a letter for us.
It could be a motion by the board to, uh.
On the action item list.
Yeah.
Does the board have to vote on our response or, or if we. Does it make a motion, says something? We're drafting a respa, written response to the complaint and we're also a lot asking our IT department to resolve the issue with the.
Yeah, so we just direct you to respond and you've picked up what we would have to add to your more specific motion, correct?
So moved. Okay.
Well, let me just think about that, because that's what I'm about, I mean, I think the motion is.
For that, I don't know.
Because we have to respond by.
Right.
Uh, and so this focus to authorize me to prepare a response on behalf of the planning board.
Right, and the further part of the motion is that we're deferring to our IT department to resolve the link issue.
He's not IT, he's not IT, he's the PR person.
Whatever, PR, whatever you want.
The city representative.
Because we can't do anything in the board, the board can't do anything to resolve that, so we have to.
That, that will be in the response, I don't think that needs to be in the motion. The only thing in this motion is to authorize me, based on this discussion, to prepare, prepare, prepare a response.
Then I should mod, modify my motion to allow Eric to prepare a written response to the complaint.
Complaint. Based on this discussion.
I'll say. Now, I'll second.
For the discussion?
Discussion.
Hearing none?
Aye. Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Sarah?
Yes.
Right. Thank you. All right, and I think this other item, I think, the networked discussion items, plan board.
I got one more, you got an approval not required.
Oh, sorry, I skipped things. Where's that?
Yes, we should wait.
Break, doesn't that say?
So.
Do we have an A and R?
Yeah. These are. Do that. Just properly. I didn't print out the latest one.
Okay.
Here it is. But it is on the community calendar.
Here's our second. Okay.
Click through them to find.
So, uh, one final item on, uh, for the planning board.
Action, action item. I'd be a plan endorsement for lots at seventy-five Oak Hill Road, Assessor's Map, R twenty lot fourteen dash one submitted by Susan Z's disc. Eric, have you reviewed this and anything we should be aware of or?
You have the full board.
Yeah, hit the A and R.
Yes, we were just discussing how I had all.
Yeah, I'll find it.
Okay.
Got the A and R.
Sorry.
So I'll review this A and R plan with the board. So he is, he created a A and R that you approved previously, I think it was a year ago or so. And basically this outline of this pretty much close to it, it already exists now, it's, it's R twenty dash fourteen slash dash one. Is the parcel through an A and R plan approved last year. He wants it divided in half because he wants to do two, two families here. And, um, it does meet the area requirement, must be fifty thousand square feet because there's no public sewer up there. And it must have two hundred feet of frontage. So both of these lots meet the area requirement.
And the frontage.
Which actually doesn't have to meet the requirement, it's only frontage, because the two criteria approved in A and R plan is meeting the frontage in the district as much as located and practical access to the lot through the frontage. But this doesn't meet the area requirement of fifty thousand square.
So I'm here then.
All right, so, uh, do I motion to, does anyone have any questions or thoughts?
Uh, I need a moment just to sort of look at the G I S.
I, I should point out this as well, um, this angled right here. You know, if you remember previously, the former chairperson, Charles Roberts, on Villas Lane, I forgot where that was, where it's a weird shape and it didn't meet the lot definition, lot width definition. This one does because it must go back thirty feet and, and be parallels, in other words, you can't have a weird shaped lot to meet the frontage. So the depth of the lot is to go to the frontage of, meet the front yard set up where the house is going to be first place. And that meets that intention.
So you can't have a triangular shaped lot.
Exactly.
So from an AR, A and R standpoint, it would have been fine the way it was, but because they're intending to put a house here, they want to get the width corrected, not just the.
Increase the frontage to meet the two hundred feet and still meet the lot width definition.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. So Eric, I'm on G I S map, this is the parcel right here.
Correct.
That they're looking to divide it.
Correct, with some change on the northern boundary.
Yes, it adds that little
Exactly.
Side wedge.
Exactly.
Yep.
So it sort of goes with a little pick up there.
Units.
Yeah.
All right. Or I'm the same.
All right, any other questions, discussion? Motion to
motion to approve the, uh, A and R and to allow our vice chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Sir.
Discussion, hearing none?
I, I did, I, I did want to say, I, I don't think, I don't think we need to approve it, I think we need to endorse it. But that's a little.
You're right, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to say that, good catch, Sarah, yeah.
That's what A and R stands for, isn't it?
I, I move to endorse the plan proposed, the A and R plan put before us and to allow the vice chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Sir.
All right, any other discussion?
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Sarah?
Aye.
Great. Okay.
All right, so last topic, since the last topic's about me, let me discuss it first.
Well, we're going to wait for George.
Yeah, that was George. So six A and O table till next time.
There was all this stuff about the, um, disaster plan, was that the discussion?
Also, double that, well. Um, George, well, he asked me if we could table it because he's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
I have, I have one question pertaining to my discussion. Who can put information on the agenda? Who can submit topics for the agenda?
Any board member?
Any board member?
Submit a topic to the chair and say, hey, can you put this on the agenda? The chair decides the actual agenda.
Is the, uh, the item you want to talk about the? Well, the, we, we want to table, that's why I'm not going to talk about till next meeting.
No, no, no.
Oh, the open meeting one you had, had later on? Yeah, what's the table, that's George's.
Because George, he's got the most.
He's the one that talks to the.
I asked you about that, too. I had free up the next.
I have an answer on that one.
Free up for the next meeting.
All right.
And I make a motion to adjourn.
Well, so do we know what our next uh, meeting data is?
The next meeting data would be the first Thursday in April.
Yeah.
So we're doing the meeting on the third and the eighth.
Yeah, so.
Regular planning board meetings are still the first Thursday of the month. So April, there are requested joint public hearings with the EDC and so there will be another joint public hearing with the EDC at their meeting, they came to your meeting today. You'll go to theirs on April eighth, which is Tuesday.
It's their meeting.
Their meeting, and that'll be Tuesday, April eighth. And your regular meeting, whatever, the first Thursday.
Well, that, that makes sense, because we were thinking, why don't we just do it on our regular meeting day? Like I say, have the same idea.
We take turns.
Yeah, well, at least there's, we get an opportunity now, then. So.
So what, did anybody know that date?
Thursday of.
First Thursday is the third.
Third, April third is the next meeting.
At the six thirty, because it's planning board.
Six o'clock. Now, just to refresh you that all planning board meetings are returning back to six P M.
Thank you. Okay, and anything to discuss about the agenda for that meeting? Your, your point, if you had, I mean, we could, we could discuss that now, too. You had some quick things to throw on there.
Well, I want to put things on the agenda that that was all the intent of the issue. I suppose to put things in front of people so that we think about them, because I think if we think about them before the meeting, we can get a better discussion. See, I want, I want to put the uh, the uh, major development review triggers back on. I want to put the thing on about the glass and the windows on Bain Street. You know, those are the kind of topics I want to get done. Bring them up and then they just fall away. So I want to put them back on the agenda so people think about them and come to me and we say, okay, what are the triggers for an M D R? You know, what are they? Boom, 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 and get them done. Yeah, what, you know, what about glass? How do we want to handle glass?
Yeah, the chairman usually, you know, it depends on what we receive from the public in that terms of applications, you know, site plan review or whatever, special permits. That dictates the agenda mostly, but and then the board has its own special topics it wants to put on their discussion items. So you can always reach out to the chair and say, you know, can we have a discussion item on this? And then he'll make the decision, uh, what meeting would be best to do that at.
I, I would support you putting those on the agenda. I mean, the meeting doesn't have to end today.
And so far, we have not received any formal applications for the April third meeting.
Okay, so I will send some topics just to you for April third.
Always copy me.
Copy.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
And nobody else.
Just don't copy a second person out.
I'm not on the board, so.
I wouldn't even copy myself.
You could copy the vice chair. Well, no, no, just you and George.
I would, I would if it's you and.
And me, I'm not on the board.
Okay, you got it. I just think it completely.
Okay, so I had a motion to adjourn.
I'm old to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Session.
Good.
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi, Sarah?
Um, no.
No.
Sorry, uh, maybe I missed a thread, but did we skip the board and staff reports?
Uh, yes, do you have one?
I have no separate form.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Did, did, did anybody have any to report?
Yeah, who's on?
No.
Didn't have anything.
I guess George is usually the one that has this.
No, it's usually yours.
Yeah, so does anyone, so done here.
You're on another board and you're the link.
Right.
Sarah, did you have something you were looking for?
No, I, well, I guess I was just going to ask if, if anyone is going to go to the citizens planners uh.
I'm scheduled, Sarah, to do that.
Cool, yeah, I was just curious.
I, I appreciate you raising that. Uh, I know as I get closer to this weekend, I'm going to think of a lot of other things. But I am signed up.
Cool.
Because you said it was useful.
It was useful. Yeah, I wish I could go this year, but I can't make it.
Do they have a virtual component?
Hmm, no.
Okay.
But they do, they do offer workshops, but not the all-day conference.
Okay.
Is anybody else going to?
I've been several times in the past. It's excellent, but I'm in DC, so I can't make it this year.
I'll be in Holyoke protecting the parade and the road race.
Any other things to report?
Good.
All right, we said our next meeting date, so now a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second again.
Discussion. Hearing none.
Yes.
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 Hi, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everybody. See you next time.
Thanks, bye.
Hi, thank you.